Good afternoon, everybody, and good evening. The agenda, public notice, special call, city council meeting, Monday, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, Jasper City Hall, four sixty-five South Main Street, six P. M. This meeting will be called to order. This agenda was posted as required under government code, section five five one dash zero four one. For more information or copy of the Meetings Act, please contact the Attorney General's Office at one eight hundred two five two eight zero one, or the City Secretary's Office at four oh nine three eight four four six five one, or you can fax West End at four oh nine three eight three six one two five. The City of Jasper Council chambers this wheelchair accessible. The accessible parking spaces are available. Requests for accommodations or interpretive services must be made forty-eight hours prior to this meeting. Please contact the City Secretary's Office for further information. Meeting has been called to order. We'll have the prayer. Bob, Bob, give us a prayer, please. Bob Mayhar.
Father God, we thank you for this wonderful place and your goodness to it all. We as a community have gone through some trials, and we thank you for covering, but we do not have serious injuries. We did have loss. We thank you for the work of the city personnel and landmen who have done a historic job on rebuilding and keeping our people safe and themselves safe. We're grateful for that. We also, Father, ask your hand over these men and women who sacrificed their life and their peace, their peace, become council members in this community. And please help them work with their better angels to make this community near our know that it can't be. For all these things, we thank you.
Amen. Departmental reports, Captain Pineck, do you have something you wanted to introduce?
Yes, sir. Let me introduce Frank. Will you take some of those? I just want to introduce our two new officers. For the first time in a long time, we're actually full of staff now. This is Frank Ervins. Frank has worked for us in the past, has come back to work for us. Kaye is, uh, just got out of the police academy. She is in the field training for, uh, part of her county right now. She is the daughter of retired Patty Stevenson, our court clerk, and she's always going to hold this against her. She's also the daughter of retired Tom and Kim Stevenson. But they will both be going to our schools. Kaye will be at the R. N. L. School, and I'm sorry, Few and Frank will be at the R. N. L. School. And he actually gets to start two weeks before anybody else, they start on the first. But I just wanted to introduce these two to you. They're our municipal resource officers. We appreciate them, and we're full staff now.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Auntie. Any other departmental reports, any updates from meeting, Greg, do you have any?
I'm in the industry projects on schedule right now.
All right, uh, we have public comments next. Ms. Renee Harrington.
I have something.
Thank you, Ms. Harrington. You want, if you want, please. Departmental reports. Okay, how about Ms. Harrington? You can.
I'll wait.
Please go ahead.
Okay, guys, I'm sure y'all heard my name, Renee.
But let me read this before you do that. Ms. Harrington, please understand that the city council cannot discuss any presented issue nor can it take any action on any issue at this time, except that a statement of fact including policy may be made responsive to an issue, which is A. G.'s opinion, J. C. zero one six nine. I'm sorry, Ms. Harrington, continue.
Uh, recently, I sent all council people and the mayor some records that I received. After I just looked at them briefly for about an hour, I stunk when I saw them. I knew to look for a couple of things, I'd heard rumors, but I didn't expect it to be that bad the more that I looked through these financial records. City doesn't get ran this way. It doesn't, you don't hire in your family, you don't, you don't, uh, make yourselves vendors, you know? It's really sad, really sad. And to think that really, all I really wanted a couple of years ago, whenever I bought my house in Jasper, was for the city to take care of their sewage. I had sewage dumped. City sewage, all our property, all the time. Bob Gary would come out and take pictures. That's what he did. Okay, and I look at these records and I see that you were a vendor of city building fences, makes me wonder, were you doing it whenever I was calling you because of the fifteen-plus, twenty-plus times that sewage was coming on my property? You know, I never expected to get to this right here, but here we are. I never, I never came to a city council meeting, I never did anything like that. I never spoke, never wrote anything about Jasper, and I've lived in this area since two thousand and fourteen. That's where it started. Greg was ignoring me. I was emailing him. I was asking him to come to my property, please come to my property. Please, you ignored me, over and over. I got all the emails. I sent you videos of stuff, okay? Ridiculous, ridiculous. And for me to see that it looks like the job description for city manager was written just for you. I've looked through many city manager positions that are open across the state of Texas. Not one of them had a minimum requirement of a hospital education, and not one of them had T. C. E. Q. certification as something on it. I'm sorry. Yeah, I have a beef with you, but I didn't want to get here. And just recently, after you're telling me that you needed a grant to fix the sewage that was constantly dumping on my property, and when it happened every Easter, Mother's Day, and you know it, because I'd send you emails saying, you know what? I'm coming to your house. You know that. It's not right. I have two dogs. They should be able to enjoy my yard. I've been wanting to put a fence and do some other things. I can't do it until the city does their job.
Ms. Harrington, thank you.
I just want to thank the council people for putting this, these things on this.
Ms. Apple. You had a question about departmental reports. Thank you, Ms. Harrington.
Yes, uh, I have a letter here that was wrote, but nobody signed it. I think it maybe telling us councilman how to vote, who to vote for, but nobody's signed it, yet it's from the city employees. Who, who did this? Who signed, who, who wrote this? Who wrote this? Do you know anything about, you know anything about it? You didn't know anything about it, did you? You know anything about it?
I knew, I knew there was a paper left for each council following.
You knew what?
I knew there was papers left for each council. That's all I know about it.
Left where?
It was left on Judy's desk.
Judy's desk? Ms. Judy don't know who been left them there neither. I've already talked to her.
I don't either. They received it, so I would just.
It's awful funny that stuff about the city, it's got the city employees named in it right here, and yet nothing's, nothing's signed on it. I would think.
I agree with you. I wish somebody would sign it, and then they go wrestle.
I think it's a bunch of bullshit.
Excuse me, Councilman Apple.
Well, I'd say that.
I really don't think that's appropriate, though.
I said that.
Yes, you did. Okay, thank you. Are you finished?
No, I, nobody's never said anything. I just brought this up for the news media to be here to sit, to hear this. This is telling us what to do? You get it, Pineck? Do you, do you part of this?
No, sir, I'm not.
Your name is on it.
Well, I'm sorry, I hadn't seen the letter, I haven't read the letter. I'd love to read it, though.
It's right here?
Well, I'd be glad to meet you after this council meeting.
Okay, that'd be good.
I sure would.
And I'd like to know who done this, but I figured nobody would never come on up to it anyway, so I said my piece, and we'll vote, because we know how to vote up here, okay? We got a mind of our own.
Point of order. Thank you very much, Councilman. Let me, let me read something from our Texas Municipal League, uh, council, mayors and council handbook. I'm sure all of you have a copy and you have read this, and it says regarding talk, Jasper council members and the audience, says regarding talk.
Regulated on talk in a council meeting.
And this is just from the Texas Municipal League, you know, that it's not law, because it's, it's not something that they can impose upon us, but this is the handbook that we as mayors and council members go by, that was presented to each council member and mayors. Says too much talking is the most common cause of lengthy meetings. Talking can assume a variety of forms, bickering, or tiresome exchanges of personal opinions among council members, endless speeches by citizens appearing before a council, or unnecessarily long and detailed reports by staff. Nearly all of these problems can be overcome by tactical action on the part of the presiding officer, which is myself. I have to add that this also. If citizens address the council rambles on and on, and the mayor may, the mayor may have no choice but to tell them to confine their remarks to the subject at hand and conclude as quickly as possible. If the problem is created by talking to council members, a simple statement to the effect that it's getting late and we must move along. Usually will suffice through private visits by the mayor, may need it to be handled by the talkers. But that's, we just want to do that because we have about fifteen items on this agenda. I know a lot of you have things that you may have to do. You may not be here at six o'clock, so we appreciate you. So. Moving on to items for discussion and our action. Consider for approval, one set of minutes, regular calls, city council meeting on June tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Are there any meeting minutes for that meeting? Do you have June for June tenth? You got the, okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
Some move.
Another motion by Councilman Hildebrand. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman. Councilman Sample. Can we get a vote? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion unanimous.
Mr. Mayor.
Consider for approval.
Mr. Mayor. I, I would like to make a motion really quick.
No, sir, we're going to follow the, the items that we have here, sir, and I'm not going to recognize you for speaking, because we have fifteen items on here. I would like to complete this.
I would too.
If you want to talk, then you can ask. So we're going to complete this, and then we can talk afterwards. Item number two, consider for approval.
Point of order.
Consider for approval.
Point of order.
Consider for approval. Agreement is made by and between the City of Jasper.
Point of order.
City and citizens of Jasper for fair and equitable rates.
You have to answer.
Can we get a motion?
I'll answer.
No, I made the point of order.
Can I get a motion on this item?
She made a point of order.
Can I get a motion on this item?
Point of order. Our rules, council member rules, state that no reasonable request to speak by council member will be denied by the chair, so point of order.
That is not true.
It is true. It's right here. We're, we're renewing our rules today, and it says no, no unreasonable request will be denied by the chair by council member to speak.
He's not made a request yet. I just denied it before he did.
My request was to make a motion.
Make your motion, Councilman.
I would like to make a simple motion that we reorganize our presentation of the agenda items to match last week's agenda, so that we follow in the same order. We owe it to the people.
Is there, is there some reason why it's not what we have here? It's not to your liking? I'm just asking a question. Is that not to your liking?
Apparently, you're the one that reorganized it.
I didn't, I didn't reorganize anything. Did I tell you, let me ask you, City Secretary, did I ask you to do this?
Yes.
Okay, so now, that's the way it is. It has, it came on the agenda.
No, hold on. What did he ask?
You're not recognized, I'm speaking now. I'm speaking now. I'm speaking now. Let me finish and then you should speak, Councilman.
Mr. Sam.
Let me speak. Let me speak.
Oh, my God.
May I speak? Okay, all I'm saying is, yes, okay? The items that we had on the agenda from last week, those items I asked her to present first. Yes, I asked her to present those first, and then go to the items that you wanted on the special call. Was that not to your liking? You had up until, I don't know when, to come in and talk about this. You didn't have to do it right now. If you didn't like the way the order was presented, you did not ask me, or you did not come in and say, Mayor, or tell the City Secretary, I don't like the way this order is, I like it in a certain way. I was not aware of that until now.
Let me clarify something.
We could have talked about this, and it could have been changed.
May I be recognized?
Sure, you may be recognized.
I don't want to get ahead of you, Councilman, or not.
Well, could you let Councilman?
Yes, please.
Okay, so let me clarify one comment you just made.
Yes, I did.
I've only had about an hour and a half, two hours, to review this agenda, because it's so.
Why is that? I just asked, why is that? Because everybody else had.
I was about to respond to that, because there was a breakdown in communication. I've been waiting since last Thursday to see the agenda, and not until about three thirty did I, was I advised, where to find the agenda. Is that simple?
Yes. That was not accessible to everybody when it was presented, uh, Ms. Daryl?
It was.
So why did you, I'm just asking, why did you not?
Because I, it was not clear to me where it was posted. I kept looking through my emails since last Thursday afternoon, when Ms. Daryl was kind enough to let me know it had been posted. Correct.
So, so your issue is?
My question is, it's curious, it's curious to me why these agenda items from the original agenda are in a different order.
Oh, I, I don't know why they're in a different order. She just gave them and I signed off on them. And all I did was ask her to make sure that the items from the, last from the original meeting.
Yes.
Be listed first. I don't know if they're different or not, I didn't understand. That's all I asked. I just asked her to make sure. I just asked her to make sure that the items from our regular policy council meeting were listed first. Yes, no?
May I be recognized? I think, I think that the question that I have is this, Ms. Daryl, did the mayor ask you to move an item number eight to item number three, consider for approval, final plat for a new subdivision on Bethelou? He did. Did he, excuse me, Mayor, did he ask you to move any other item besides that one? Because the agenda is exactly the same as last week, except for that particular item, and we want to project fair, fairness, and, and it's equal to everyone here. So when you take an agenda item and you move it from the bottom of the agenda, Mayor, to the top, I, I believe that is what people have a question about, because we didn't have a problem. We didn't have.
Can people have a question about that besides you and Councilman Hildebrand? Except people. Can you tell me what people?
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Were you allowing me to speak? Were you allowing me to speak?
Yes, I am. You said people have.
Okay, I have a question.
Let me ask you, let me say one thing.
You're not allowing me to speak.
You finish, and then you can answer, because I had called and talked to, uh, the, uh, person who wanted this item to be on the agenda. I didn't know if they were going to be here or not, because they were going to be here and leave, and I told them that I would move it to the top of the agenda, that I could do that. But I don't see Mr. McDonald here, because he want to be here a little.
Yes, I know.
But does it matter what, how, let me ask you a question. Does it matter how the items appear on the agenda to you?
Does it matter to me? It matters to me that it's fair, and when you were asked.
It's not fair.
When you were asked, you said that you didn't change any agenda items, but you did. You changed this particular agenda item.
What's the problem?
I think it gives preferential treatment to someone that shouldn't by you moving it from the bottom to the top.
Where it's location on the agenda? Is that your opinion?
Of the long meeting, that's my opinion.
Okay.
I'm the people.
Thank you.
No, you asked me, you asked me what people, I'm the people.
Just before, City Councilor.
You, you asked me who, who, what people. I am the person who thinks that, that, that that's a bad look to the citizens of Jasper to give preferential treatment to anybody.
I don't think that's preferential treatment. It's just an item on the agenda.
Okay, so then you would have no problem if I make a motion to, if I can make a motion to put it back on number eight instead of number three, you would be fine with that?
You can do whatever you want to do. Do whatever you want to do, make a motion. Do whatever you want to do. I don't, I don't see a reason why there is an issue with the way the items appear on the agenda. They're all going to get addressed.
If there's not an issue, why did you move the item?
They're all going to be addressed, because I have the option to do so. When it comes to me, I did that, and it's not, not any preferential treatment for anybody, if that's what you're trying to imply.
No, I said I want to be sure that no one thinks that we have preferential treatment. Well, we can play the tape back later.
But we're going to move on. Oh, thank you for conducting this meeting, Councilman Hildebrand. Let's move, let's move on. Since you said let's move on, we will. Next item, consider for approval, settlement agreement is made by and between the City of Jasper, City of Jasper for fair and, and, and the citizens of Jasper for fair and equitable rates. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, can I have a second? We have a second by Councilman Hildebrand. Any discussion?
Uh, no.
Yes, Councilman Sample.
Who would, you have, who would ever win?
You have, do you have anything?
Yes.
Okay.
Where's Iceman?
Yes, sir.
I've got it, this is it.
No, but.
What I'm understanding, or maybe my understanding here, uh, they froze the money, right? Is that the way to say it?
They put it in where it can be, I don't use an electroplating.
Money's not frozen, yes, light and power.
Light power, these things.
It's not frozen.
We can't use that much no more than I be on a damn basketball court, so, for no swing moves, for no splash pads, for no unnecessary stuff. That's sealed and take care of them.
Any other, any other discussion on this item? Can we get a vote? All those in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number three, consider for approval, final plat for new subdivision on Bethelou. Can we get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to table this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we, can we get a vote?
Uh, aye.
Three, four? If, if three, uh, four, any opposed? Any abstain with Councilman that you voted?
I abstain.
Councilman Barber, stay. Councilman Barber, stay. Councilman Holmes. You voted aye, okay. So we have one, two, three, four, aye, motion passes for.
And the abstain.
That's what I said, motion for.
Would go with.
That'll be, that, that will be, because he did abstain, but it will go down in the record as an extension, which also goes toward there. Toward that, that's possible. Item number four, consider approval, City of Jasper, second quarter investment reports, can I get a motion to approve?
Some move.
We have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand. Can we get a second? Second by Councilman Sample. All in favor? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All vote? Motion, somebody say aye. Did you say aye? So you were changing your mo, your vote to yes?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Consider for approval, appointment of charter review commission. Can we get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to table this.
Motion table, we have a motion to table. Can we get a second on that motion?
I'll say.
Second by Councilman Demarcus Holmes. Can we get a vote?
Yep.
Discussion, any discussion? I'm sorry, any, any discussion? Okay, can we get a motion to approve? We got a motion to approve, can we get a vote?
Aye.
One aye? And one else?
Motion to approve, to approve table.
Yes, motion to approve the table, can I have a second? Any opposed?
Aye.
Can we, can we get a raise of hands, because there are people in our hands, okay? Can we get everybody to raise hands from now on the voting process, please? Thank you. So we have four, 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 or five? Is it unanimous?
No.
Okay, yes.
I oppose.
You oppose? Councilman Hildebrand opposed, so we have four. Did you?
I voted aye.
She voted to table. Yes, she, she made the motion to table. Councilman Sample, second. And now we have one vote, no.
Ms., I'm, I'm, excuse me, Mayor, he, he seconded, I'm sorry, Mr. Holmes.
Yes, Councilman Holmes. So we have Councilman Hildebrand voting no, and we have four yeses. Okay. Motion does not pass. Oh, yeah, your motion passes to table. Uh, consider approval for an ordinance review commission. Can I get a motion, please, let me, please, sir? Can we get a motion to approve? Yes, sir. Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to table.
We have a motion to table by Councilman Sample. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Angel McCroskey. Any discussion? Let's vote, all in favor of the motion being tabled? Say aye, or raise your hands. All in favor, raise your hands. We have three, all opposed? Raise your hands. We have two opposed, and three, four, so the motion passes to table.
Two opposed.
Councilman Hildebrand and Councilman Barber. Consider for approval, allow each council member the choice of using an iPad and place the hard copies, or continue to use the hard copies. Can we get a motion to approve? Councilman, Councilman Demarcus Holmes made a motion to approve. Can we get a second?
I'll say.
We have a second by Councilman Barber. Any, we have any discussion on this matter?
Uh, yes, I do.
You may, go ahead.
Uh, I want to just stay with the hard, with the paperwork right here.
So you have the option to do that.
I never could get the paperwork.
That's your option to do that. That's why, that's why it's on me. You have the option to do that. You have the option to do that. Can we get a vote, please? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consider approval, two thousand and twenty-four water conservation plan. Can we get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by council. We have a motion by Councilwoman McCroskey.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hildebrand. Any discussion on this item?
I do have two or three questions.
Go ahead.
First of all, as a human being, as a hardworking, tactically American citizen, anytime I see the words conservation or preservation, I get a little scared. So I just have some simple questions. Put this in ordinary language, you know, second grade reader, not a Webster's or Black's Law teacher. Um, I understand that this is something based on water consumption. I'm going to speak as a residential customer instead of commercial. Now, at this moment, residential customers or accounts or field has a certain dollar amount for the first two thousand gallons, and then an additional dollar amount for every thousand gallons they're having. Is this pla, does this plan increase those dollar amounts, or does it add a third tier, or what is, how is, how is this going to affect us as customers?
Ready to address that, please? Thank you.
This is the same plan we've had for many years, we just updated it. It has to be updated every five years. Do you hear me now? It has to be updated every five years. No change anything on your rates and all that stuff. We've never had to go under the drought contingency plan or the conservation plan because our wells here in East Texas, they were hardly dropped during any of the droughts. And so we've never had to do it, I don't see us having to do it. Uh, despite the history since, uh, we get records back from the wells, we back, some of the wells, test wells are back, I think nineteen ten or nineteen fifty. And have records on it. So no, it won't affect you.
Okay.
It's just a state requirement, we have to have it in place in case there is a drought and we start losing water in our wells.
I did not understand that, and one more little question, this is for metered locations, right? What about, uh, what if there were just a horrific loss of water through non-metered consumption? How, how, would that affect residential accounts?
If we had, if we've had a major leaks in, like in two thousand and eleven, when we had, we was having five or six major leaks that day.
Correct.
If that was so, we could go into conservation if we could get the leaks figured out. I think O'Mahay had to do that just back here.
Right.
So far, we're going to handle the leaks.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mr. Hildebrand.
Any further discussion? Can we, can we get a vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Me opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine, consider for approval, appointing rating committee, consisting of city manager, city secretary, and one city council member for the resilient communities program grant. Can we get a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, can we get a second?
Mayor, we need, we need to put a, pick a council member.
Yeah, we'll.
I see.
We have a second by Councilman Barber. Any further discussion?
I have a question. Um, does this grant require that the city manager, the interim city manager, and the city secretary and one council member? Does, does the grant require those particular or specific people to be appointed to this committee?
No, ma'am, we, uh, the grant, we, we got a form, we have to fill out, score each one of them, and we, since we and the city secretary are here, and we've done it before, use it, one councilman gets on that. It's always not been the city manager, sometimes it's been other city employees. We go through each one of the brochures that we get from each one of the grant writers, or the proposals, actual brochures, and score. And then bring it back to the council on. So the council has not normally, you know, been on this.
It's not just offered.
It's always been one council, it's always on the committee. It's where we all sit.
So would the council like to, uh, appoint someone at this time? Question? You will?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Sample, you will be the, uh, councilman. We have a little council.
I'm with you.
Thank you. All right, can we get a vote? All vote, I think, all in favor?
Can't, can't, I have a discussion. I didn't, I didn't hear a call.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
So I made the motion because I had to ask this real crazy question. What is this? The, the resilient communities program? I'm sure I'm not the only one who does.
Yeah, I think last month, y'all, I'll tell the big guy off. It's a grant that Jeremy found. It will help with the, it's software and all that for tracking, and it will also give you information for, uh, floodwater and, and, and the flood zone, information on flood zone assistance.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about now. Thank you. Thank you. I get that.
Need a vote, any further discussion? Excuse me, Councilor, any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number ten, consider for approval, discuss review and amend council meeting rules and procedure for the city of Jasper. Uh, I would just like to make one statement on this before we move forward with this, which is what my opinion is, council members. And if I'm not mistaken, Councilman Hildebrand, please correct me if I'm wrong, because I did ask you about this particular item. And I can't even ask you about this, and with the rules that we have from the handbook from Texas Ministerial, and I know I have no issue, you guys want to discuss this in a special session, open session, but says council work sessions, which is what I recommended to you. You know, and council work sessions, they are subject to the Open Meetings Act. And citizens would have a little bit more to say in that, with this, with it being here in this session. Basically, it's just a discussion between council, which you may do. But it says informal work sessions, sometimes called workshops of the council, may be needed from time to time to study certain matters in detail. These are most often held in conjunction with budget reviews, since regular council meetings do not provide enough time to consider the budget in detail. Work sessions are also useful when major policy questions must be decided or when a complicated ordinance, such as a building code comes before the council. The Texas Open Meetings Act applies to all council meetings, including workshops. A notice of workshop meeting therefore should be posted in the same manner as a notice of regular council meeting. Also, minutes are recorded, must be made of the meeting. But you have decided to, everyone, go do with this, so can we get a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I, can I just reply to your comment?
Sure.
To, so that we're all on the same page, you and I did have a conversation about this. You asked me about the workshop setting environment.
Yes.
My exact response was, I love that idea because I think it's very fitting.
That's correct.
And, and I, I like, I still like the idea of a workshop, but I also, in that same conversation, suggested to you that perhaps you need to visit with Ms. McCroskey as well, because she also asked for something very similar.
Yes, she did.
If not exactly the same.
I, I, she, I did, and she did come into office that day. We did not have a good conversation on it.
Okay.
And I, I did try to talk to her.
Okay.
And once she left office, I did try to call her. She did not respond, so I did not get a chance to talk to her.
And you, you advised me that, I wanted to be on record to let everyone know that you and I did have that conversation.
Sure.
Okay.
May I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
Okay. Um, on October the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, the former council, this is a copy of the minutes, there was a workshop session that was held, and, um,
All right, what is that?
This, October the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three.
With the former council, this is a workshop, um, and, uh, it's, it's for this exact thing, this was a workshop. Mayor moved to the next workshop item, mayor and council communication. The mayor and the council discussed the rules and procedures, allowing for council members to add agenda items and discuss past rules, not being followed by the mayor and the council. And so there's already been a workshop on this, and nothing changed, this was never brought back again. And so that's why I asked for it to be in an actual, you know, a meeting setting like this, not just a workshop, because this is also a, a past
Sure, I understand.
issue. So that, that's why.
Okay, but my, my thing is, this is a new council.
Yes, sir, I understand.
New council members here now, so we have the opportunity to make that happen.
Yes, sir.
In, in our field, in my, my opinion, and what I'm reading here, I do not feel as though, as, like I said, as I spoke with Councilman Hildebrand, I did not get to discuss this with you in detail, that a workshop would be a more fitting session for us to do that. And then we can bring it to council.
Yes, sir, why?
Changes that we have made, instead of prolonging the time to, because I don't know what wants to be changed, or what anybody wants to be changed, I just think it would be better served by being in the workshop, and then we can, whatever we got to get to in the workshop, come to an agreement of items that we won't change, and then bring them to a regular council meeting, so if we can't take action in a workshop, you guys, we can request, we can all agree to put it on the agenda, I'm sorry, you guys can hear me, put it on the agenda, and then we can bring it to a vote.
Well, I actually, I actually just have, um, um, one motion, and like I said, it wasn't, it wasn't brought again before council, um, when it was in a workshop before, so I, I actually just have one motion to strike the sentence, quote, "The mayor will exercise his or her best judgment in determining items received for placement on the agenda meet the criteria." I would like to insert that, insert there instead, quote, "The net effect of any policy cannot mean to preclude a council member from placing an item on the agenda for public discussion." Texas Attorney General opinion, number DM two-two-eight-one-nine-nine-three.
Okay, I would like, I, I, I understand that, but if I may, I would like for our city attorneys, since when I did call the, uh, Attorney General's office about that, I did speak to someone, he did not give me a name, because he's called, well, I get to speak to him, but he called me back and left him a message, because I asked him about that on the agenda, and we went, and the council wanted to look at making some changes, and what I was told was, consult your local attorney, so I would like for our city attorney to.
Yes, sir.
If he has or has not, I hope so.
Our charter powers of the city council is that we set our own rules and procedures, our own rules and procedures.
Okay.
And so I would, I would call for a vote.
Well, I would call, I would like for our city attorney to make sure that it's.
If our, if our charter says that.
It does.
If we have to follow that.
Yes, sir, it does say that the city council sets its own rules and procedures, Mr. Radcliffe.
That's correct.
But what is this, what is the role of the city attorney? Do you have that?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not making any kind of motions on the city attorney's job.
I didn't, I didn't say any motions on this job, I asked you what's the role of the city attorney.
No, sir, I'm not answering questions about the city attorney, I would like to make a motion to strike.
I'm asking that we talk to the city attorney to make sure we get an opinion on that.
Attorney, does our charter state that the city council sets our own rules and procedures?
Yeah.
He said yes, that's the opinion.
Okay, well, that's fine.
I make a motion to strike the following sentence.
We have a motion to strike this, and it's from the rules and procedures for the city. I see, we have a second, we have a second.
I see.
We have a second already, Councilman, Councilman Demarcus Holmes. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have it, excuse me, Councilor? Thank you very much.
We need a, we need a.
Can we need a vote?
Vote behind you.
We have, how many, we have, what, three so far? Four?
Council.
Five, we have unanimously.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I just feel that that, that sentence.
That's okay.
I, I'm sorry, it just causes.
This is done.
Okay.
Okay, we already voted on it, that's, there's no more discussion. So it has been passed. It will be moved, the city secretary, will redo these, and that will be stricken from the, uh, will be changed, whatever, Councilman, you can get with the city secretary and have her to, uh, let her know what you want to change, okay? Consider for approval to discuss review and implement proposition A, ordinance five-ten-dash-twenty-twenty-two. Can we get a vote on that?
We get discussions on the first.
After we vote.
I'm ready to vote.
We got, excuse me, can we get a vote, can we get a, a motion on that, please?
Some moved.
Okay, we got a motion, I'm sorry, Councilman Hildebrand, you have a motion second?
Second.
Second by council, council member McCroskey. Any discussion?
Yeah. I understand, from right here, I've been kind of putting up with this for a whole year, haven't gotten answered. I still would love to find the lawyer that, that told her what to do.
Okay.
I assume that will never happen, but I assume this here was passed. While I keep care of everybody, let the public know it was passed. And furthermore, all I can hear about is electricity, this also contains the water and sewer. I hear nothing about it. Heard nothing about it.
Let me answer that for you, Councilman Sample.
You can.
Yes. Ordinance, and I think I did read this the other day, ordinance five-ten-dash-twenty-twenty-two. Whereas election was held in the city of Jasper, May seventh, twenty twenty-two, at which proposition relating to the amendment of the home rule charter of the city was submitted to the duly qualified resident electors of the city for their actions they're on. And whereas there were cast at said election, seven hundred and thirty-eight votes, of which numbered there were cast. Proposition A, for the proposed amendment of section ten point thirteen of article ten of the charter, six hundred and eight votes. For, against, the prop, proposed amendment of section ten point thirteen of article ten of the proposed charter, a hundred and, a hundred and thirty votes. That was against. Majority for, the proposed amendment of section ten point thirteen of article ten of the charter, four hundred and seventy-eight votes, so that did pass. Now, be it ordained, moving down, be it ordained by the city council in the city of Jasper, Texas, section one, the matters and facts set forth in the preamble of this ordinance are hereby found to be true and correct. Section two says the election held in the city of Jasper, May seventh, twenty twenty-two, which is more fully described in the preamble of this ordinance was called, notice thereof given in accordance with law. Only qualified resident electors of the city voted in the election, returns of the election have been lawfully made by proper officials. The election was resulted favorable to the adoption of the proposed amendment A to the home rule charter of the city, with more than a majority of the qualified voters voting at the election, having voted for proposition A, submitted at such election. Section three states, proposed amendment A as approved and adopted by the majority of the qualified voters voting at such election shall become a part of the charter of the said city. And it is hereby declared that the amendment said to charter, to said charter is fully set out in the ordinance calling said charter amendment election is hereby adopted. It is hereby founded and determined that the notice of meeting relating to the regular meeting of the city council at which this ordinance was adopted, and heretofore posted, the city secretary and posting thereof was proper, and said notice of the posting are hereby authorized, approved, adopted, ratified, and confirmed. This was passed, approved, and adopted on the tenth day of May, twenty twenty-two. It was signed by Mayor Randy Sayers, attested by Karen Pumphrey, city secretary, and approved informed by city coun, city attorney, Michael Stewart Radcliffe.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
I think the question is, is, is this being implemented? Uh, Ms. Peake, you're the, the financial director, are we implementing this since it was passed two years ago?
I don't know exactly what the formula is for this implementation, I don't know, I can't find anything on that. The only thing that I can tell you that I do know for a fact is, in talking to the consultant that you guys approved, this synergy that is looking at a rate study for electrical and later this year, water and sewer, is they are showing that our rates are okay. And when you take the rate summary that we have from our software system, and you compare that rate summary for what people were billed for, compared to what our expenses are, totally for utilities for electrical, we're actually under.
So have we had a rate study on water yet?
The water and sewer study agreed, you know, in the meeting that we had, I think you were there, and you were there, and you were there. Will come later this year, because they wanted to finish the electrical first, okay? So we're close to that, and that will be brought back to you, council, for you guys to look at, as a matter of fact. They will come, as the attorney who worked with us, this Craig Bennett, are going to come and present this recommendation to you for the electrical rates, okay? And then it's going to be up to you, the council, to say, okay, this is what we want to go with, or this is not what we want to go with. So you'll have a base rate, again, the energy cost will fluctuate, that depends on what we get charged for. And I think the council had agreed, or some that were at the meeting agreed, that they would go talk to SRPA at Mr. Grant's recommendation, to try to check into those energy rates, because he felt like we were being overcharged. Right now, the energy rates are down a little bit, this is an election year, I don't know what's going to happen with that, we don't know. But I mean, this is where we're trying to get to as far as a concrete implementation.
Okay, so the. I'm sorry, I thought, I thought I had.
Let me ask one question.
Oh, okay, please, continue.
You mind if I ask one?
No, no problem.
Okay. One question is, are we, right now, with our, since it says any utilities, correct? That's what it says. Are we charging over ten percent of any utility right now?
I can't say for water and sewer, because we're going through our rate analysis.
Excuse me, sir, excuse me, sir, excuse me, gentlemen, gentlemen, I don't think this is a laugh or not, because I think we're serious about this. Okay.
Well, what, what I'm telling you for electric, because this study was done for last year.
Okay.
Now, this year, I can tell you for electricity, we're way down, because the council gave three million dollars back to the people, so that does put us way down. I can't say for water and sewer, I don't know what the rates should be, but that's what the study is, and I think in that meeting, we all agreed that if we can get past the electrical rate study, which should be coming soon, then by the end of this calendar year, we should have numbers on what the water and sewer rate should be. The big deal was, is trying to get those rates for inside and outside the same. That's what we discussed.
And what we want to do is, one of the things we want to make sure, which is, has been a question, is that from when this ordinance was done, in, uh, was passed in twenty twenty-two, were the, the electrical rates and the water and sewer rates, were the charges on those over ten percent? That's one of the things, and you can't answer that.
Do I, do I still have the board?
I yield back to you.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Ms. Peake, I think the question is this, if we're legislators, that's what we do, and we make law for the city of Jasper, and we make law for the city of Jasper, and two years ago, the people of Jasper voted for this overwhelmingly, then it should have been put in place then. It doesn't matter how much the rates are now, or the study that we did with the free and equitable rates, it matters that if we place a law in place, we're required to follow the law, and I think that's a lot of, that's why I'm asking questions, because a lot of people, citizens, are asking me questions about this, so I think that's the question, so the answer to the question is, is that when it was. People, citizens, are asking me questions about this. So I think that's the question. So the answer to the question is, is that when it was voted on in, in twenty twenty-two. The answer is no. It has not been implemented, correct?
No, no, I can't answer that. You can't answer that.
I personally, I personally cannot answer that.
Who can answer this question? You're the financial director.
I'm the financial director at this point, starting in January of this year. I wasn't taking care of those things as. In twenty twenty-two. I did the election. I took care of that. But as far as rates. That was not part of my job.
Let me ask, let me ask this question. And I understand, let me ask this question. I understand what you're looking. What you're trying to, what you're trying to, what you're getting. And I understand that, and I appreciate that, but. If, and I can't speak for water and sewer, and like you said, she already said she can't do that, but with the electrical rates. If we were never charged over ten, but what I'm saying is, this ordinance puts in place the protection.
Yes, sir.
On the citizens only being charged up to ten percent or not being charged over ten percent. Is that correct? I mean, I wrote it, so I think that's what it says. But if we have it now, what I'd like to know is. Well, she can't answer that one either, because I, I want to know is if. The cit- if the rates have been over ten percent from when this ordinance was passed in twenty twenty-two. That, that's the question that I have. If the rates were, and, and I understand you're saying you are the current city finance director. But you weren't doing it at that time, so.
Can I respond to, to what you did, to what you just said?
Sure.
Because I, I'm not really looking for anything, but, but, but there's a lot of laws in place. There's a lot of laws in place. Okay, there's a lot of laws in place. Please let me finish, Maryland. Please, please let me finish. I can't say that there's not a law, a thing that's against the law, but we're not doing it right now. See, that, that's not the way a law works. Either you, either, either, no, I'm, I'm giving. You, you were able to, to make your point, that it's not above ten percent, so you think it's okay that we're not following the law that was voted on by the people of Jasper since twenty twenty-two?
We're not charging over ten percent. Would that not?
It was not put into place. Was there a study done, Maryland?
There was a rate study. I'd have to check with Craig, oh, is it Synergy? I'd have to check with the Synergy company to see if there is a rate study from that time. You can do that. I don't have to do it. You can request that. Doesn't have to be something done in the meeting. Doesn't have to be something. It has to be approved. You as a council member can request that rate study from Synergy.
I just think when people come out in overwhelming numbers, and that is true, and they are people, and they are citizens of Jasper, and they vote for something, and then it's not done.
But how do you know it's not done? You keep saying it's not done.
Well, this is our financial director.
She doesn't know. I'm gonna ask you.
Do you know?
No, I don't. I already said I didn't know. I told him that in the radio. He asked.
I'm trying to get the answer to questions, Maryland.
She doesn't have the answer to that question. But you keep, you keep repeating yourself. No one here right now does.
Okay, well, you know what? Maybe we should do this. Because it was a law that was passed in twenty twenty-two. It is an ordinance that was passed in twenty twenty-two. Perhaps we need an investigation by the Texas Attorney General. Maybe that, and maybe they can find the answers that, that we're all looking for because no one knows the answer.
You didn't have the right to do that.
Perhaps we need that because nobody has the answer.
Call the Texas Attorney General's office and do that. Please let me know what they think. Okay? Maybe you should do that. I'm just saying, maybe you should do that.
Because no one here, no one here has the answer to these questions.
Can we move on? Or is there anything else, any other discussion on this matter? So what, so what do we, what are the outcomes? What are we gonna do with this? Excuse me, council. I, I hear councilman Sam. Ms. McCroskey, you can yield the councilman's out.
Here in the air.
Ms. McCroskey. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
That would help us at this point. Could you not vote to put, say, you know, put this into implementation and allow us the. How you want us to implement it? By going by what is presented to you from the rate study that they have done. To give you rates and let you know, because they know about this charter proposition. I gave it to them. So that when they're doing this study, to make sure that we're under that ten percent, or ten percent or under. So if you're going to, I'm just asking for help. On what you want us to do and how to implement it. We want to bring to you everything that we do have and that we know have. And you guys okay a study through Synergy for this. So we're asking for help from you just as much as you're asking from us.
The, the study from Synergy is for this proposition or that it's for the, the free and equitable rates brought by Mr. Grant, Mr. Grant?
It's a little bit of both because the whole idea, I mean, is regardless of what the rates are under what the, the, this committee wanted. We still have to stay under that ten percent. So they're, they have got that. So they know that we've got to stay under that. We can't go over it. So that's what we're asking, you know, from you. How did you want this to end?
I, I can't answer for the entire council. That, that would.
Did you make the motion? Could you just give us your opinion? We don't have to answer for the entire. Just give us your opinion.
My opinion on, on this night, on property debate?
On how you would answer a question. Yes, someone else will come here and. Yes, Councilman Hilda Grant?
Is there a motion on the floor now?
Yeah, I asked for a motion to.
Okay.
No, there's not.
I didn't think.
I asked for a motion to approve because.
But, but there's not a motion.
No, sir, it's not.
Okay.
No, sir. Because I, I came in and, and talked about, or read the. No, sir.
I got lost in all of that.
No, sir, it was not a motion.
So I would like to make a motion that we, uh. That we table this item for this reason alone. Number one, I think it's too easy for us to go back to twenty twenty-two and, and check our rates versus what customers were billed. And while this is taking place, Synergy, I would say this. Uh, as some of the folks from that group said, and other folks from other groups have told me. We better be careful what we ask for because we've got some of the best rates in the state, in, in the state of Texas. But that said, uh, Synergy will also be completing their water analysis. I mean, they won't say definitively, but pretty soon.
That's correct.
And I think maybe by the time the electric, uh, billings have been investigated or studied, I don't want to say investigated. The water analysis very well could be completed then, and then we've got the water that, or. So I would like to table this item for later day.
Okay, we have, we have a motion by Councilman Hilda Grant to table. Can I get a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Demarcus Holmes. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. This item will be tabled. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your discussion on this matter. Item twelve, okay, item twelve. Consider for approval an investigation by the city council regarding the city of Jasper financial records sent by email to all council members. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Hilda Grant, Hilda Grant? Barber? Oh, Barber, okay.
Sample. I'll, I'll yield on the Barber.
Barber. Okay. All in, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Yes, council, you will, uh, revise how you're going to do this investigation. That will be up to you. Uh, next item, thirteen. Consider for approval a forensic audit to be performed on the city of Jasper finances by a qualified forensic auditing firm chosen by the city council.
I like a motion, whatever.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in, any discussion? So, I have one, I have one question. I have one question, uh, Councilman Hilda Grant. The audits that we have this year, this, this is not feasible for what you're, what we're looking for? Does, does, have any of you reviewed this? The auditor twenty twenty-three audit that we have?
In part, I have.
Okay, is anyone else?
An internal audit is a completely different thing from a forensic audit. This is a forensic audit.
This is not an internal audit. This is from an independent firm. We don't do our own audits internally. It's from, just like you hire a firm, just like you hire a firm outside. That's what this firm is. They're hiring outside. We don't prove, we don't, we don't. We hire a firm to do this. But you're, you're right. If you would like to have another firm come in, and if we can afford to do that, we can.
We can. Do we have a motion and a second? That, that, did someone motion and someone second?
But I just asked for a discussion. Any other discussion?
Not the same thing.
Did you have any discussion on it?
Yes, sir.
Anything sample?
We don't, we, uh. We picked, you know, have something to do with picking this here. There will be no way we've had Weaver's or.
It's their council.
Axel Rowdy or wherever. It'll be somebody else totally.
It's their council can do it.
Totally new to everything here.
Talk to the city finance question.
They will answer back, they will answer back to the city council what they find. Right?
Are you making that as a form of a motion?
No, we already have a motion. Yes, a forensic audit. They will answer to the city council absolutely.
The city council, not the, uh, financial director.
We will choose the forensic audit in firm, the city council.
Okay, good deal.
Can we, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We have three ayes. Do I hear another aye or, or any opposed? We got a aye. Four, Councilman Barber? We. Aye, you may speak.
I vote, I vote you don't. We, we can appoint somebody, we can appoint somebody already. Did you have this? Who did that tell them about?
Oh, that's, that's our, that's our area on. You know, somebody we chose, the, the, the city chose, I mean, basically.
Did the city council choose them or just the city?
City. This is not auditors that we use year in, year out, but we have the right as council to choose somebody if you want to. Motion passing, you said aye? Motion passing now. Item fourteen. Consider approval for solicitation. Consider for approval solicitation of legal opinion from state attorney general regarding roles, rights, and authorities. Of the mayor and each of the five city council members as defined in our current city charter. And our current council meeting rules and procedures for the city of Jasper. Texas along with former AG opinions JM six-three nineteen eighty-three and DM two-twenty-eight nineteen ninety-three as supporting documentation. Can we get a motion on that?
I'm gonna move.
You have a motion, can we get a second?
Second.
You have a second, can we get a discussion? No discussion? Can, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Item fifteen. Consider for approval solicitation of minimal assistance from Texas Police Chiefs Association. In review of grading. And appli- and appi- of applications and or resumes reviewing, review, I'm sorry, received during the current job posting period. Can we get a motion?
I'm gonna move.
Can we get a second? Well, we have two motions, one from Hill, Hill Grant and, uh, Demarcus. Okay, motion back down, little man, second. Any discussion? Is there any reason why, I, I, I'm, uh, this is you, Councilman Hilda?
It is.
Could you explain that, please?
I would be glad to. I would be glad to. We, as council members. Have sole authority of appointing or selecting our next chief of police as has always been the case. We need to be able to do, perform our due diligence to the highest and maximum, uh, level available. So, uh, in lieu of outsourcing. In lieu of anything else, this is an opportunity to have someone with experiences. And with the professionalism and the resources to help us merely grade every applicant.
Okay, so I'm, I'm trying to understand what you're asking. You said minimal. So you're, you're asking what happens in the.
Well, every, every group, with any, with any kind of, of search assistance. You've got anywhere from, uh, a bullet point, uh, range of items they can assist with up to forty pages.
Sure.
They can go as far as you want. You and I have talked about search firms. They can run you forty thousand to eighty thousand dollars.
Yes, absolutely.
This association performs the same services. Uh, as few as you'd like, as many as you'd like. Um, and quite frankly, all I'm interested in is, and it's all I feel comfortable needing. From an insulation, uh, perspective is. Helping us grade and rank those candidates from applications and experiences.
That's your opinion? Does everyone else on council agree with Councilman Hilda Grant's opinion? That's what he just, uh, stated. I just asked a question.
Is there a reason, is there a reason why, Mr. Hilda, that you feel that we need to do this?
Yes, sir. Because, uh, for one, to reduce any risk of liability. And to, uh, to use it as a, uh, methodology of us performing our due diligence to the highest level. From making a bad decision. And when I say we, I'm not talking council, I'm talking.
You're saying a lot, but I'm just trying to, but, but I'm asking a question, of course, what about those who would be incurred? From, uh, the something, you mean from this or from anybody outside?
It could be from, it could be from anybody.
You mean before, you mean before it's hired somebody?
How many, yes, how many times has someone?
From the applicants themselves.
How many times has someone been hired by the city of Jasper and within days or weeks, the whole city's been sued?
No, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying from the applicants themselves, that's all I ask. But yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds good. Okay, we have, we have the discussion. Can we get a, a motion to? Yes, Ms. McCroskey?
Um, are we required to, to choose whoever they recommend as rating system?
No, never have been. I mean, we can.
Okay, because so they can say, we think this is the best from one, two, and three, and we can choose someone completely different, and that's no issue, no liability.
Well, it'll be an issue, I promise you.
It won't be any liability because they're just, they're free.
We're not committed to following their recommendations.
Excuse me, Joe. Can we, that, you, Councilman Hilda?
We're not interfering with anybody. We okay over.
Sir, I'm just asking.
You take care up there.
Sir, but you're talking out there, you and the council. If you just please, the council, the council number will speak, please. I'm just asking. Please.
I'll call it out.
I'll call it out.
The council asked me questions from the prior.
He was out of order also.
That I talked to him after.
Sir, he should not have been talking while the council was speaking, but I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
So, back to the question.
Yes, sir.
We're, we will not be committed to anything. We can, we, it's still our choice. We're in full control. Of every, of the whole process.
Let me ask you a question, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Are we in control of the full process? Why are we gonna go spend money when we are capable of making this decision ourselves?
For the reasons I've already mentioned, just performance of, of due diligence to the highest level. And, and I will say this, I, I'm gonna throw this out as a caveat, and I've said, I've shared with a lot of people. I'm not, I can't speak for any of my fellow council members. But if any of, any of have been approached like I have been over the last three or four or five weeks. I've had so many people tell me who to and who not to, including those, I have no idea who's applied. I have a good idea who might would apply from our own department right now. Including those individuals themselves or people speaking on their behalf. If I were to do the right thing, the ethical thing, I would refuse myself in the whole process, and I think anyone else here at this table should do the same. So then we're, I'm, I'm trying to protect the process.
But we can't refuse ourselves as, as city council members. We, we, we do this. We, we appoint police chief. That's part of our job.
And you're exactly right. And when I make a decision, it's gonna be a well-informed decision, and then I want the best information handed to me. I want, which that information's gonna come from way better resources than any one of us at this table can offer. That's what I'm looking for.
Not all of us.
Well, I, well, you may have.
I've been in this forty years. I trust that. Not all of us.
I respect that. Because we worked at the rodeo many years together.
Yes, we have.
Okay, any further discussion on this matter? We have a motion, a second, and now we've had discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
We have one aye. We have two ayes. Any opposed?
I oppose.
We have two opposed. No, councilman? We have two opposed and two ayes, so. We have two opposed and two ayes, so you're not voting? So right now, we have a tie, so I guess I'll break the tie, since you're not voting.
Aye.
So we have three, four, and two against. Motion passes. We are adjourned.
It's a while.